For the work session tonight is going to be the discussion of the revision to the right-of-way ordinance.
Come on.
Eric?
Hey, you should go down anyway.
How are you doing this evening?
I am fantastic. How's everybody doing today?
Doing good.
Okay, so, we've kind of brought this up a few times, and if you have not met, this is John Thomas. He's our right-of-way and construction inspector, so he's the one out there battling with the myriad of contractors we have running around town.
Yeah, I hear ya.
We had been talking for a long time and kind of working on revisions to the right-of-way ordinance. The last time, the right-of-way ordinance dates back to June of '05. So, we're working on 17, 18 years since it's been touched. And at that time, it was just very basic, and the fees were kind of, you know, what you would see, you know, based in 2005. We've just got a ton of work going on. We've had extreme, you know, a huge amount of growth since then, and so, we felt the time was right to come in and revise this, give us some information, put some information in here. We've never covered things that have come up that were not covered under the old ordinance. So, it's a pretty extensive revision. I think the older copy was, you know, 12 or 13 pages, and it's almost double that. But, you know, these are things that we saw as issues that we felt needed to be addressed. And we've had meetings with all the utility heads, with Richard, John, members of the planning department, so this is kind of a cumulative effort of everybody trying to make this happen. I know we sent you the copy of the ordinance and then the summary guide. You know, it lines out what each section means and what is covered under each of the sections. Does anyone have any particular interest in anything, any questions about anything? I'm gonna hit some of the high points.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna hit the highlights. I just didn't know if anybody had any questions. So, one of the major things, you know, the first section definitions and then administration, it defines the appeal. It goes down to the right-aways, and it talks about major, minor, small type A, small type B projects, which is language from the old ordinance. Those were the same things we did before. It talks about emergency and exceptions of permits, and how, you know, what the criteria for issuing. If you go to, on page nine, it says page nine on the summary on the top page, it's section 19-105. It gives some ability, it talks about compliance of construction standards, and it gives us the ability to prohibit or limit placement of new facilities if no room exists. We've got some areas out there where these right-of-ways are packed to the gills with water, sewer, gas, electric. We've already got one, you know, telephone. We've got one internet provider with, I think we've had franchise agreements with now four, five, and they're all gonna want space in the right-of-ways. And I think you probably are aware of all of the line hits we've had, where we've had outages of water and sewer and electric because these contractors are hitting these lines. The other thing, and we'll get to it, but another major issue for the utilities specifically are line locates. You know, we're required to go out, they send in a ticket to 811, we're required to locate where those lines are. So, that's people going out physically, scanning, marking, painting. There's a limit to how much our locators can do in a day, and I just happened randomly a while back to pull their tickets, and, you know, just on one day, they had 70 line locates already. And that didn't include someone submitting for 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 feet of utility lines, of, you know, communication lines. Because anytime anybody puts mailboxes in, they do landscaping, they put in signs, they do anything in the right-of-way, they're required to have a line-locate ticket. So, being able to limit where the placement is, if we don't have room, is a big deal for us, telling them that they've gotta look for another place or another way. Because we don't wanna, we wanna limit as much as possible the chance of something getting hit. We can require them to use the least disruptive technology. If trenching is the least disruptive, we have the ability to do that. If boring is the least, we can do that. And there's a number of different ways to do the installation. This, the previous ordinance, did not give us the ability to necessarily dictate to them what type we wanted to see. This gives us more authority and the ability to dictate to them what they're gonna do. It also provides a 24-month guarantee of work in the right-of-way for restoration projects. One of the big things, I think we had, I believe it was AT&amp;T went into Rock Creek a couple of years ago, they did the whole subdivision at one time. And I think we all kind of learned the difference between Bermuda and Zoysia grass, because we got calls from residents, hey, I had Bermuda, and they put Zoysia down, and getting it repaired, getting it seeded, getting it sotted, and taking it back to where it needs to go. This requires them to give us a guarantee of their work, and if something doesn't take or something gets damaged, they have to go back and fix it. They have to document directional bores of over 500 feet. They have to video-document the storm and the sewer lines. And I'm gonna ask any of the utility superintendents or Richard to jump in if they have specific things, but I know we have found sewer lines where we have a line running right through the middle of it that we didn't know was there. They hit it with the boring rig, kept going, popped back up, and now, we've got a utility line right in the middle of our sewer. So, if they go over 500 feet, they're gonna have to bring in a camera, they're gonna have to camera it to verify to us on video that they did not disrupt any of our utilities. Sidewalk panels, you'll see on these bore pits, they dig out sidewalk sections to start the bore, they'll go underground, and then they'll pop back up underneath the sidewalk. We're giving them 72 hours to get the sidewalk repaired. We have ADA accessibility requirements. This is a very walkable community. People use these sidewalks every day. When they've got these things blocked off or torn up, it's disruption, and we get a lot of calls about that. So, we're gonna make them get in there and get that stuff fixed in a timely manner. Let's see. Also making notifications being completed to the inspector, having him out in the field being able to look at these things, having them schedule an inspection for him to come look, just like our building contractors do. A lot of times, they'll come in, start their bore, make their run, clean up how they think it needs to be cleaned up, and then they pack up and they're gone. And we don't know that they're done. They're gonna be required to get a final inspection, is essentially how we wrote that. It's gotta be a final inspection so that we can clear what they've done. Let's see. The ability to cease work, which we have on any of our code-related information. No obstructions in water, in gutters or waterways, that happens a lot. They'll come in, they'll have debris, they'll have stuff piled up when they dig a bore pit. We've seen a ton of instances where they just, you know, pile the spoils that they're digging up right in the middle of a sidewalk, blocking foot traffic. Under enforcement, it talks about reasons for possible denial. Work done without a permit, there are times when we're gonna have an emergency that comes up, and they, you know, it allows them to come in and do the repair work, and then come to us for the permitting, so we have a written record of the work, and then we can track it to make sure that it's been completed properly. And it also puts fees and fines on it in addition to a municipal ticket. If we have a real bad case of a situation like that, we'll bring them in front of the city judge. Typically, we don't like to do that. We're gonna give them the opportunity to fix it, but if we have someone that is habitually not getting permits and doing these things, our general ordinance allows us to double whatever the permit fees are. And under the building side for our permit fees, we can also assess, for repeat offenders, we can assess a $500 fine, which is the maximum that we're allowed to assess. That has put an end to a lot of that, because we've hit some of those fines, and it's amazing how quickly things straighten out after you do that a few times. Talks about completing work in a timely manner, which we need to stay on top of. They have to contact our office within 48 hours after receiving a violation. Then if you go down to section 19-107, it talks about indemnification and liability. That puts the liability of the work done back on the contractor, so that they're responsible for any and everything that they may cause in the course of doing their work. And then, once again, 19-108 talks about enforcement and penalties. General provisions, we have several, this is a lot of the legal information that we have to have in there. And also, I'm gonna let you know, you know, you may know Greg Fender, who is the consultant that's been helping us with our cell stuff. I sent a courtesy copy of this to Greg, and just because he extensively does a ton of work. This is his specialty, and he said he would give us a courtesy review of it, see if he sees any issues. And as soon as we get that back, we'll incorporate any of his thoughts into the document before we bring it to you for adoption.
Appreciate that. Always worried about the unintended consequences.
Yeah, and that's part of why it's so extensive, because, you know, there's things that you don't think of until they happen, and he would have a good insight into things that he has dealt with in other jurisdictions that would help make that, you know, know what those things are. One of the bigger things that you're gonna see in section 19-10, which is the schedule of fees. Because it has been almost 18 years since we revised this ordinance, we made some updates to the fee schedule, and some of them are pretty substantial. Now, what we did was, we looked at ordinances from neighboring communities. We looked at Daphne, we looked at Mobile, we looked at some of the others to see what they're charging for this kind of work. We're right in the mid-range, if not in the lower range. There were some that was even higher. It's comparable?
Okay.
Yep. So, we're gonna be right in line with what some of the other jurisdictions are charging. You may possibly get a call, Mayor Sullivan may get a call, because it's more than we've been charging, but we've also been way on the low end. For a number of years, we felt we could come in line with what most other people are trying to do with it. One of the other things you will hear too, one thing that has never been addressed in any of our ordinances, and that's gonna fall under 19-112, balconies and appendages. We have never had anything addressing balconies overhanging our public right-of-ways. And that presents, from an aesthetic standpoint, it looks great on a building, and I don't think that's something we don't want to allow, but it does cause issues as far as head height and sign height when they're doing that. We've had numerous metal poles smacked, you know, hit. We had one just not too long ago down on Fairhope Avenue, cars pulling forward and hitting the support poles. So, what we, and I'm gonna ask you to, because I know we both went through this together, but it is a one-time permitting fee per square foot for balconies overhanging our right-of-ways. Okay? And it's not an annual fee, it's not something they have to continue to pay to have it, but when they build a building and they put an eight-foot balcony over an eight-foot sidewalk, there is a separate permitting fee or a fee assessed for doing that over the public right-of-way.
So, if you've got a three-story building with two levels of balconies, one time?
One time.
Gotcha.
One time. Yeah. Unless you disagree and want to charge them three times, we can always do that.
No, no, no.
But, no, that's the intention, is one time, you know, for that, so that, because that's also a big part of our review. There's building code stuff that comes into that, there's planning and zoning stuff that comes into that when you're reviewing these balconies that come out, and especially the ones that have the vertical support post out at the end. There's things we have to look at, we look at drainage, we look at all kinds of things and how that affects it. Documents for permitting with major projects within our roadway limits, that's something that, what kind of documents we require. You know, you might be surprised as to what kind of documents the different contractors provide. We have some that give us great engineering documents, that everything's been located, they've gone in and they've done their homework. We've had others that it's just been a one-line diagram, here's a street, here's about where we want to put it, and that's it. You know, getting some standard form of what kind of documents we want to see, that's something that's important to us, because it's hard to review something that, not necessarily drawn on the back of a napkin, but, you know, essentially, so, being able to dictate what we want. Bond requirements on 19-115, talking about one-call locates, 24-hours notice prior to the commencement of work, 72-hour notice if it requires the closure of a street. In that chant, it gives all of our departments a chance to look at it, and it gives us a chance to get with police department and Public Works, saying we need a road closure, and that's a minimum of 72 hours. You know, if we have something that's a problem, we've got an event coming up, we can tell them when they can and cannot do it. But that gives us an opportunity to make sure that the public is informed, you know, we can do social media posts, we can do face, website posts, things like that, to get as much information out there for folks to know what's happening. Talking about 118, section 118, which is trench excavation and underground construction requirements, it's gonna provide methods of how they're supposed to do it. Hazardous materials, you know, when they have their boring gel and other things that they do, how that needs to be handled, how that need, because we have that stuff just kind of dumped all over the place now, depending on where you are. We're gonna dictate to them how that needs to be done. It also talks about, within the roadway limits, with utility depths minimum of 36 inches, outside the roadway, a minimum of 30 inches. Trying to get it to a depth that is not gonna interfere with our utilities, but getting it also low enough where it's not gonna get damaged. If we have to come in and do a resurfacing project, or we need to come in and do other maintenance items on our right-of-ways, doing our best the first time to get it in at a depth that will cause the least amount of problem. Right-of-way restoration within roads, we talk about concrete surfacing requirements, unpaved roadway surfacing requirements. We have the possibility of some different types of technology that's actually gonna put the underground lines more in the asphalt. I think there's gonna be advantages to that, there may be disadvantages to that. We want to be able to give them some details on how we want that done. It kind of gets the stuff out of the right-of-way, which are now getting very congested, but it also, you know, puts a cut in our roadway that we may or may not, you know, we want to have some say in how that's done, because then that becomes a maintenance issue on surfacing and many other things. So, we want to be able to provide them direction, direction on how that work should be done. We also cover right-of-way and easement restoration outside of the roadway areas, so asphalt driveways, concrete driveways, concrete sidewalks, curb and gutter. We talk about construction safety standards and guidelines for boring and drilling. You know, that's one of the things, typically, that kind of work is covered under more of a worker-safety OSHA-type thing, but there are some safety requirements as far as flaggers, people to direct traffic, proper safety apparel for the people working, you know, they need to be in the safety color, so you know they're in the roadway. You know, we covered some of that to make sure that there's some consistency in how that's done. Locating and potholing, when you know there's a utility there, you're not allowed to mechanically dig. You're supposed to hand-dig and pothole and locate that utility before you go. When these guys get in a hurry...
Good luck with that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that doesn't always happen, so, we want to put some stiffer language in there, telling them that they need to do it, because that's been part of the problem why we've had so much stuff hit. They hadn't potholed it, to verify where it is or how deep it is. We also talk about as-built plans in electronic format. The one thing we don't get a lot of are plans of how these are put in and where they're put in, that we can now give to our GIS and our mapping folks, so that, you know what, in five years, hey, where did we do that? We can pull it up and it's there. That's not something we consistently get. That is gonna become a requirement. They have to provide that at the end of the project, so that we can keep track of where all this work is being done. Then we have, you know, the micro-trenching installation methods, and we'll deal with that as it gets there. We hadn't really, none of us have any field experience dealing with that, so we want to make sure that we have some information on how that's, how's the best way for that to happen in Fairhope if it does. Tree protection, right-of-way supplemental ordinance, that's just referencing ordinances that we already have on the books, but putting them in this document, so that people know as they're reading through it, which contractors should always read through the city codes, so that they know what's going on and they know to reference back to it. We also put in there, street cuts. Doing street cuts, you know, especially when we've got paving that was just done, or paving that was done two or three years ago, you don't want to make, you know, a six-foot square hole however deep to do a street cut. If they're gonna do it, we're gonna tell them how they need to go back and fill and compact, so we don't have any subsidence in the roadway later on, and how we want that asphalted. The other thing is, you know, some latitude, to be able to tell them, no, you cannot cut our street, you've gotta find some other way to make it happen. We just paved this last year, we don't want a giant patch in the middle of a newly paved street. Which, right now, we don't necessarily have the authority in our current ordinance to deny it. That's something you, if, we don't necessarily want to, if that's what the contractor needs, we want to try to be accommodating, but there are times where what they need or what they want is not in the city's best interest, and our job is to look out for what is in the city's best interest.
Agreed.
Then, let's see, details, irrigation liability form, one of the things that we have all the time, and I think these guys get the calls. Folks love to, you know, they irrigate their yards, and they do a beautiful job of maintaining our portion of it as well. They'll put an irrigation line, you know, under a sidewalk panel, catch that strip out by the road. Well, a utility company comes in, they cut that as they're trenching across, they call the city to come fix their irrigation. If folks do that, we want them to be aware that if you're doing that, you're doing that at your peril, and if there's any damage, it's not the city's responsibility to come fix your sprinkler line. And we have a lot of that, Marcus and I've had a lot of those things come up. We actually have a fairly standard hold-harmless form that we do when those things come up. And it helps, because people get upset about their, they really get upset about their irrigation. So, we want to make sure they're aware of it. And we have a brick paver detail, so anyone that's going back in our roads and they're doing pavers back in an area, it shows them the detail on how they're doing it, so that once again, we don't get a subsidence under that surface, and we start having pavers doing this, going through. So, we're gonna show them how to do it, and then we're gonna leave it up to them to do it, and if they don't do it correctly, that goes back to the 24-month maintenance that's part of the earlier part of the ordinance.
Okay.
And that's kind of a brief, somewhat overview of all the things we covered.
Well, it sounds like y'all definitely spent some time and effort to get this right, and as far as you know, there's no gotchas, no anything missing at the moment. I appreciate you putting that out to Greg to let him get some...
And we're gonna also send it, I have not sent it to Marcus yet, but I'm gonna send it to Marcus and Chris, and let them look it over and tell us. The one thing I would ask, if any of the utility departments or Richard or anybody has anything else you want to add, that, I don't know if that covered everything, or if you guys have anything else that you guys have seen that, you know, kind of explains why we did this. It's something we've been working on for a long time.
Well, I appreciate that. And council members, do y'all have any questions?
And I see we...
For John or Eric?
He has primarily been working on it, we all have pitched in, but he's the one who typed all this, he's been doing the research, so, he's been the driving force behind us.
Council members, any questions?
No, much needed. I mean, ask about it in public meetings.
What's your timeframe on wanting to see this on the council's next meeting?
No, I would like to get any comments back from Greg, and I'd also like to get comments back from legal team. And I would probably like to have one more sit-down with all the department heads and go through it, and let's just make sure. What I don't want to do is bring this to you and try and get in a hurry to do it, and then, five months later, oh, man, we forgot about that.
Yeah.
We really want to try to think it through as best we can and make sure we've got as complete a document as we can. So, that said, maybe first or second meeting in April, maybe that gives us time to get everything done. If we can do it the first meeting in April and I can get it to Lisa and meet my deadline, we will do that, but if for some reason we can't...
No rush.
Yeah, I hear ya. Second, you think, second in April? Okay. Second meeting in April.
Okay, sounds good.
Does this affect within the city limits?
Yes, sir. It's any, well, it's anywhere, we actually have some right-of-ways that we also administer that aren't necessarily in the city limits, but we have an agreed, like, I think the stretch between Manly and 34 and 13, we maintain that. There's a few areas like that. Not many, but 95% of it will be city limits.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the presentation.
Sir.
All right. The next item on the work session agenda is a discussion of the Rain Tree Lift Station. That'd be Jason. There you go. You were hidden right behind that monitor, I didn't even see you out there.
I think Mr. Boone knows as much about it as I do. I caught the tail end of the original when they came to, before the, I guess, the council back, I think a year or so ago?
A year.
And about this station. I don't know, I wasn't here, we don't know why it's where it is or anything, it serves seven houses, and the homeowners are just having issues keeping it up. Our proposal originally was to bring it up to the city specs, then, you know, we would pass it to you all to recommendation of taking it over, and it'd be our maintenance. Previously, the old HOA that was there did not want to do that, so, that kind of was dead in the water, but I think now, all that's changed.
So, I know I had a conversation with Councilman Boone, and he'd worked it out.
Yeah, I think I called everybody concerning this.
Okay.
I was the main cog in trying to stop this, because we did not want something that was faulty, in my opinion.
Or didn't meet our standards.
Didn't meet the standards of the city fair. And since that time, things have changed, to where now, they're very agreeable to putting it to the standards, and Jason will make sure that that occurs, he and I talked about it, and I see no problems with it at this point in juncture. And they just want to be rest assured that should they spend the money, you know, on doing it to our standard and get it to our standard, we're gonna come back and say, oh, you know, never mind.
Okay, so, really, the next step is, they just need to hear from the council that we're on board with this?
She's here to know.
Okay. So, she just needs to hear that we're on board with this, and that when the work is done, the next time we see this, it's gonna be asking for us to take, take it back for maintenance.
And I did explain to her, that they were all, y'all were pretty much all on board, that the lab rose up and started causing a bunch of problems, and we do not have those problems, and so, there would be no problem.
And they're, she is, they're using one of our approved vendors, and we've also been in conversation with them, and we've already approved the equipment ought to go in, so it'll be brought to the standard.
Okay. I mean, I know, I've talked to you, everyone else has, everyone on board with that? Councilman Martin?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay. Sounds like everybody's on board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the work session agenda is a review and discussion of the working waterfront engineering plans. Lou, Scott?
Hey, guys. Scott Hutcherson with GMC, and, is this a remote? I have a little PowerPoint I was gonna scroll through, so I'm not sure how to get to that. Right arrow on that, oh, man, that's good. Okay. We're gonna give you a little update on where we are, which is almost complete, actually. So, we're really wrapping up the plan set now, and we've got a few decisions that we need made that we'll talk about here in just a minute, but just kind of an overall, overall update, if I had a pointer, this would be easier, but I know it don't work on that screen, but just kind of go through some points of the project that we've settled on and move forward with, and we're done. The top of the hill at Fairhope Avenue, there was some ADA requirements that we were needing to accomplish. We were able to do that with slopes and a small, little retaining wall in the same path that the sidewalks in now. Going down the hill on Fairhope Avenue, we, about the middle of the way where you see the new asphalt, darker asphalt, we are redoing the cross-section there in the roadway a little bit to put a normal transition from curb to asphalt in that. If you remember, that's an area where you have really high curb, but we're cutting down the sidewalk area to lower that and bring it back to a normal cross-section or typical section. You see the shaded area, that's the proposed parking lot, and kind of a redo from what we have right now. The overall plan here that we landed on several months ago was to just keep everything very similar to what it is and not make any drastic changes, and that's what we're sticking with. So, what you see is very similar to what's there now, just improved traffic flow or pedestrian flow, new asphalt, pavers in a lot of areas instead of asphalt. You can see the improved little parking area there on the north coming out of the loop. Redoing the center a little bit, the, you can see it's very similar to what's there now, but just, we're gonna redo the... but just, just we're gonna redo the landscaping, um, and do some new, new plantings and new, new walking paths there. The, the fountain area, the pool area will be a little smaller than it is now. Instead of going with, um, what's there now, which is, which is brick that leaks and, and all that, we'll, we'll be doing a pre-cast, uh, pool that will, that will hold water better. Still use brick, but, but the, the gut side will be pre-cast concrete. The centerpiece, we're just gonna go back with, with the centerpiece that is, that is there. And, and Richard has all the, the pumps and whatnot for, for that. We'll, we'll improve that as necessary, but, so if you, as a council, want a different centerpiece, uh, we need to, we need to know that, uh, soon. And the, uh, the, the pier, redoing railing, uh, making improvements on that. The bulkhead that's there now, um, along the south side of the pier, we are going with a, uh, we settle on a, a seawall, a real heavy block wall that will, will stay there through storms rather than a, a wood or, or vinyl bulkhead. And there's a small decision or input I need your, your help with here in just a minute on that. You can see the plan has the, the new walking paths that, similar to what you've already seen, but they're, they're really more nailed down. The bathroom location, I don't know if you can really see, I'll, I'll walk over here and put it out. We, we kind of jumped around a little bit on where to put a bathroom, and we really settled on, oh, so, right here. Sorry, I put the wrong joint, uh, right there is the location for the bathroom, uh, I'm sorry, it's right here. The reason we put it there is, is that it's right outside, uh, the flood elevation. And Eric will, will tell you that, that makes a big difference on construction, um, on the design of the building and the construction of it and, and permitting and everything else. So, so that, that's the, the basis for that being located where it is, is to, to move it right outside the, the flood zone. And the, let me see, what else I need to point out on that? Oh, the, the, you see there's no longer a ramp on the south side. Uh, you, you of course knew we were, we were moving away from that, that situation, but we'll be replacing the stairs with, with, uh, proper stairs with, with new, new materials. But in that place down there, we're gonna put a, a funicular, um, a lift in that, in that area. And what we need help with the council on is, is really choosing the, what the cart looks like. There's a bunch of different options on, on what you can, you can make it look like. But it's a kind of an open-air gondola-looking thing, but it, it sits on a rail and goes, I'll show you some pictures here in a minute. Goes up and down, it's essentially a, an elevator, uh, laid on an angle. Uh, it's got all the, the proper, uh, equipment in it that, for, uh, public use, just like a public elevator would be, and, and all the safety equipment and things like that. But we're doing that instead of a, instead of a ramp. And we jump through. This is, is the seawall, you've probably seen that before, but that's an example of just, it's a heavy, heavy block wall, a couple of thousand pounds per, per block wall that, that will be there and stay there and will hold up under wave action and things like that when we get the hurricanes that we will, will get. That is, is something we, we'll, we'll need to make a choice on. The costs are all really similar, but we'll need to make a choice on material, um, face on, on that. That's, that's kind of the choices that, that we're, we're looking at, we want your, your input on. And of course, you don't have to tell me right now, but, but we need to know, uh, pretty soon what, what the consensus is on the material choice. The, this is the funicular I was talking about, that's just an example of, uh, looks kind of like Mobile Bay, but it's not. It's on, uh, one of the Great Lakes, but that, that is an example of what you can do. It can be totally open-air, it can be, uh, glassed in, it can be roofless roof, uh, several different options. It, it's, we'll do the one that's, that's ADA compliant, wheelchair accessible. And so, you'll just walk right on it, um, and close the door and hit the button, and it takes you down to the bottom. And, uh, just like an elevator, you call it back if you're on top and it's on, on the bottom. But, uh, that's, that's where it's gonna be located, right next to the existing stairs that are down on the south end. Those stairs will be, be improved, and then right to the, as you're looking at it, right to the left of it will be where that, that goes. And it essentially takes up the same footprint that a set of stairs will, will take up. And it's just on a rail system that'll probably have a support on top, support in the middle, and support at bottom. And, uh, very, very low impact, uh, I know impacting the bluffs is a concern, but, uh, this, this will have a much less impact than even a set of stairs would, would have. That's the top location where it'll be, where the stairs come up. Just a, just a picture from, from one of the, the websites that have these things where you can, uh, see people using it, you see the little call button there on the right. That's, uh, don't get hung up on the picture, uh, that's just what, uh, just an example of, if you're wondering how it can look. It, it looks a little funny coming down the hill because it's, it's leveled. We'll have a cart that when you get to the top and it flattens off, it'll, it'll lower down. It's kind of a self-leveling cart, but it just keeps you at a, um, keeps it even as it goes down the hill. Uh, obviously, don't get it hung up on the fence either, we'll need some protection from the railing, but, uh, we will not, will not be specking the, uh, chain-link, uh, fence there. But it'll, you could just see that the, of course, we're, that's a, a big one. We're only talking about 20 vertical feet, there are actually less than 20 vertical feet that we're dealing with, so a lot, a lot less than that, a lot shorter rail than that.
Now, is there a rail or a cable?
Sorry, Ken, what's that?
Is this gonna be a rail coming down the hill or a cable?
It's, it's a rail. And it's, it's, it sits on a, on a, we, we, we'll spec stainless, but it sits on a stainless rail, and it, it's, uh, powered by a cable. Just, you put the, you put, you can put it on top or bottom, but in this case, in our case, we'll put, use it on the top. It's just a continuous, uh, loop cable that just runs. It's got brakes and all that, just like an elevator would, something like. So, cart styles, and what I'll do is, is, we're not specking a, a, uh, a, a certain type, but we'll, we'll, it'll be kind of an or equal deal, but this will give you a, a chance to give us your opinion on the cart style that you, you would like. And I'll, I'll direct you to the, a website you can look at to, to start giving us your opinions. But, but just some examples of the, the cart styles. We would, as I said before, we'd go with, uh, an ADA compliant one that has the, the five-foot, uh, platform in the middle that, that you can put a wheelchair in and turn it around. And, and you, you can have a totally open-air, uh, you can have, uh, just a, a canopy over the top. You can have fully enclosed, uh, the second one's a, a popular one where it kind of looks like a cable car look, but it's in glass enclosed. You don't have to have glass enclosed, but those are the things I need, need your input on. And we're at the point where now where we, we gotta make a choice and, and keep going. And the, we'll jump to this, this is a, another one we, we just need a, a decision on. You've seen this on the, the, the city's Facebook page, they put that out there for, for, to get the, the community's opinion on that. And you probably saw.
Do you get unanimous consensus?
As always, it was, it was, uh, uh, you know, it just, this is why y'all get paid the big bucks. We just need to make a decision, and, uh, it, you, of course, the one decision's always, don't do anything. Uh, we have the option A that was out there, and I don't even know the results of the, the, the poll. Mayor, do you, do you know what the?
Yeah, it's, I mean, I think the, the one that happened the most, lights or whatever, was probably this one.
Oh, okay.
And then if you go, you scroll through on each one, um.
Yeah, that's.
And you'll say, oh, I like A, but they were on picture B.
Okay, all right, that, that's A, and this is consistent with the, the Facebook. Uh, this is B, uh, C, D. And there's, there's as many opinions as our people in the room right now, so we just need to know. Tell us to do one, and that's what we're gonna put in the plans. And again, one of the options is that, which is nothing, so. So, that, that's the, the help I need. Oh, oh, one other big thing, um, the, in that same area where the, the concrete bulkhead is that we're doing repair work, uh, the way it's set up for that work now is, is kind of a menu of, if we go in and it's this bad, then you do this, if it's this bad, you do this. So, we kind of pick, and we have this preset fee for, uh, from the contractor for making those repairs, based on the level of, of work they have to do. So, we're doing that work in that area. And the work around that area that we're doing too, with the new sidewalks and, and parking and things like that, we're really in a situation where we, we need to put up some type of railing around it. Currently, there's nothing, and, and we are, we are in a situation, like a lot of things, that when you start touching it or making improvements or things like that, you need to bring it up to, to code. And not having anything there for protection is, is really not where we, uh, as, as a firm, we cannot recommend that you, you just leave it like, like it is and not put any, any railing. So, that's certainly an option that, that you have. If, if the city directs us to do that, then we'll, we'll leave it like, like it is at your direction with, of course, some, uh, some whole harmless is thrown on there, but, uh, but, you know, we need to, we need to make that decision to, do we do something? And if we do, there, there, there's, there are some options of what we can do, uh, there's, there's some, but there, we still, still have some rules we have to follow. So, that, that's, that's one big decision. The other is, of course, the entrance and, uh, to a smaller degree, the, the finished material of the, the block.
And then the cart.
And the cart, yes, the, the cart.
Now, the block, are we replacing the entire wall? In the front and the, um?
From the south, we're replacing all the, yeah, the, the wooden wall that's there with the, the rock in front of it. The, the seawall there, the, the concrete wall at the base of the pier, we're, that's what I was saying before, we're only replacing what we need to replace. So, we'll, we'll go in there in the damaged areas and peel it back and, and look at, at what we need to do to fix it. And we'll have a, a menu of things that we, we, that we'll apply to fixing that, and we'll do those, and the contractor will get paid for that. And, and then in some, in areas that we don't need a repair, we just, we won't do anything.
Is it gonna look weird if you've got a, one type of finish on, on, say, the south seawall, and then you've got just the regular traditional, what we have right now, finish the smooth concrete?
Uh, it, it shouldn't, I mean, it's just panel concrete, so, I mean, it'll, it'll look a little nearer than, than what's there.
Okay.
But.
What, what kind of timeframe do you need, uh, decisions and feedback from the council on this?
Less than two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, so council members, I think the, the plan being presented is really taking this back to, it's very similar to what's already out there. I think, um, that was the feedback from the community, uh, not to change it, but it definitely needs to be, it needs to be updated some. We've got the bulkhead repairs that definitely have to be made, and I think anyone who's walked down that sidewalk and knows the height change on the, on the curbing, I mean, there, there's a lot of improvements that need to be made there, but it sounds like the four things you need are a decision on the pre-cast, the cart, the pier entry, and bulkhead railing, or, or whatever that may be, so.
Yeah, on the railing, I saw a couple of pictures here, I was looking at it back in, in the office. The railing, um, I see bushes here, but we, will we put in railing or some type of impediment? Are you thinking all with, along the wall?
Yeah, at the wall, those, of course, those, those bushes are, I mean, that's just artist, artist rendering, and that, that, conceptually, that would be in more between the car, that bushes really be between the cars and the, the walkway. So, this would be right at the bulkhead.
So, something like, I mean, posts with chain going between them is sufficient enough, or?
I, I don't know for sure if we can do, if we can do that, that would be preferred.
Yeah.
Something, uh, something like that, um, but if, if the rules don't allow that or require something more, more fortified, then, then that's what we'll, we'll do. If, if that's, if that's what the council wants.
But it would go from that point down to the bulkhead?
Uh, it'll, it would stop, it would just be the circular part that's out there now.
Kind of in line with where the walkways are right up against the water.
Uh, sorry. Just the, the circular part of the, the, uh, the half-circle part there at the base of the, of your, where the concrete wall is now. That's, that's where we're talking about. Once you get south of that, no.
Yeah, yeah, no, just that part, I'm just gonna go along, yeah, exactly, that's the bottom speed.
Well, council members, any questions or comments for Scott?
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
I know you've been working on this a long time, thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll try to get you feedback, uh, well, would this be coming for a vote next council meeting?
Yes.
So, we need to get with Scott in between now and the next council meeting. So, if y'all want to consolidate your answers maybe to the mayor and let her reply to Scott, and we'll make sure we contact Councilmember Earl as well.
And you're welcome to come by the office, uh, we'll call you anytime, Black Deal, if you want to meet.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, next item on the agenda is, uh, committee updates. Councilman Martin?
Fairhope Environmental, uh, the board had a good meeting, the mayor was there, uh, our, um, one of our, um, comp plan engineers was there, that's environmental, um, and also Hunter was there. We had a good, kind of a, uh, meeting of minds, um, I think a lot came out of it, so I was happy, um, for that to happen because I think it's very important, um, as we go forward with this comp plan. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Robinson?
No update.
Councilman Boone?
The only update I have is the har, I mean, the, um, personnel board was meeting on the 17th, Thursday the 17th, and that's the setup day for the Arts and Crafts. So, it has been moved to the 24th at 7:00 AM, for all those that would like to come and visit with us. And the, uh.
Sounds early.
Delshin Room, I guess it is. At 7:00 AM, so see, they're bright and early.
All right, and, uh, the only comment I had was the, uh, library committee. I think the library's got slightly amended hours because of Arts and Crafts Festival, obviously. That impacts, uh, that area of the town, uh, pretty substantially, and, and looking forward to a great event coming up this weekend, so. How about department head updates? And as you're, um, giving your update, you can also address any agenda items. And the agenda's a little bit shorter, um, than in the past because we did have a shortened time period between, uh, meetings, but we have a few items that we're gonna probably need to walk onto the agenda. So, I might as well go ahead and give y'all a quick overview of that in case we want to discuss during agenda. But we've got, um, an item to, uh, move forward with procuring the Fells Park fencing for the reg department. That item came in under budget, and just want to go ahead and move forward with, with that. That item came in under budget, and just want to go ahead and move forward with, with that. We also have a, a liquor license app, application, and I can't read the, is it Sean Trans? Okay, Sean Tron Dining, got it, and that, I couldn't read, read that, but, um, that is, uh, trying to get that in, in, uh, today as well, so that that can be approved prior to Arts and Crafts Festival. Obviously, that's a big weekend, and don't want to hold them up. And then the last item was, uh, the City of Fairhope had voted to purchase the VT Skater Services for Electric Department from Deep South Automation. And, um, basically, he was allowing procurement for that with the option at the cost of ninety-seven hundred, and that was just some additional, uh, work to be done. We've already approved that, but that's for additional work.
Yeah, you've already approved a contract for the Skater work to be done, and as they started working, they realized they'd need to do a little bit more, so just some additional to that.
Okay, alright, so those are the three items that we're gonna be needing to add, and then we have one item, item number six, proposed ordinance, we're gonna be removing that and pulling that from the agenda, and that was related to, uh, concession facility, um, the blast soccer, so just wanted to hit those, but now, I guess, if y'all would, Department Heads come forward, give an update, and if you've got any items on the council agenda, go ahead and address them.
I can make this pretty short.
Yes, sir.
Not a whole lot to update. Uh, we are still anticipating the new signal upgrades at Twin Beach and US ninety-eight at the end of this month, so hopefully, one morning, you'll drive through there, and there'll be new mast arm poles up, and, uh, ultimately, it will be tied into ITS, because right now, it is just a dumb signal, meaning that it gives a left permissive turn lane, whether there's a car waiting or not, which is kind of frustrating. But, uh, eventually, it will all be tied in, so it only, uh, you know, if there's not a car there, it's not gonna go through that cycle, so we're excited about that. Uh, Council President, Council, I've got really only one item on the agenda, that is a, a implement for a skid steer number ten, and the only reason we're talking about it is because it was slightly over five thousand dollars, so it has to come before you. Also, not still any pages thunder, but number seven, um, you know, we worked with them to get, um, windows replacement at the Nick Center, and the odd thing is, is that they did get some informal budgetary quotes from vendors, and we used that to build a, a bid package, and we went out, and none of those people that gave estimated responded, and when that happens, we have a right to go to what's called an informal bid, meaning we can go to a qualified vendor and try to negotiate and bring it back to you, so we, uh, we hope that you'll authorize that, because we are also trying to spend insurance money, so that we can get everything closed out for FEMA and our insurance, and this is one of those lingering things that still needs to be done, so I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Well, council members, I just want to say, I, I had a short conversation with Richard the other day, and, and he's having some, some issues getting enough bids back at times, and I know, I just wanted to mention that here. I mean, right now, I know it's a real struggle. I hear you. Well, we'll, we'll repeat it in the future.
Well, and, and-
But for right now, I just wanted y'all to know that, you know, that he is working on that, and, and trying to get bids, and just not always getting enough to come back.
And, and I think I can speak for all your operational department heads and superintendents, is, is that we're almost shameless in trying to get, you know, hey, did you see this? Make sure you respond. We sure wish you'd participate. And, uh, right now, you know, zero is not an unusual number that we get, and sometimes we just get one, and I think last week, we had three major openings, and each one of them had one responding, uh, and it wasn't from lack of trying on our part.
Well, appreciate you trying.
Alright, thank you.
You know, the shame of it is, in my world, they had a bid open, and the guy had two bids. He waited till the very last minute to make sure, one bid was if somebody else walked in there, and the other bid is he walked in there by himself. And he walked in by himself, and that bid was substantially higher than the other bid, so, I mean, they're doing all kinds of stuff in these times, and really are frustrating.
I, I, it is frustrating, I agree with you. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Busy weekend, huh?
Yeah, yeah, just a little something going on. Um, just to remind them, folks, uh, streets will close down. Sorry, just turned off my volume button. Um, streets will close down Thursday at five PM, um, and Tony's Towing will be circling our CBD, um, because those artists are ready to rock and roll, um, by six o'clock, which is move-in time for them. So, um, just to remind folks to come out. Friday's weather, we're not really happy to have you about, but Saturday and Sunday look great, so, um, we're excited for a full show this year. Um, I know the, the foundation and, and Vicki Cook, and the committee's been working really hard, so y'all come out and support them, so. And like Richard said, number seven, that's Hurricane Sally. That'll be this week. Hopefully, in two weeks, we'll have a ceiling tile, um, resolution coming before y'all too, so we're just trying to wrap up a lot of those Hurricane Sally projects, so, um, that's pretty much it. And I'm gonna take off my city hat and put on my, um, um, Live at Five board hat, and remind everybody that Sister Hazel is playing at the Halsted Amphitheater Friday night, and I believe they still have tickets for sale for twenty-five bucks, so y'all go out and support them, um, at that concert Friday night.
Alright, thank you, Paige, appreciate that. Yes, sir, Pat, how are you doing this evening?
Good evening, I'm doing well, yourself?
Doing good.
Um, let's see, youth, uh, baseball and softball are both starting up tonight. They, they both had to cancel their opening days Saturday due to weather, uh, so we're hoping for a good spring season for both of them. The Fairhope Storm is two and oh, and they play at home again this coming Saturday at three o'clock. Uh, we're hosting Special Olympics at, uh, the stadium on March twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. It's gonna be a two-day event like last year. Um, and also, I wanted to inform you that we, we've posted signs on all the, um, softball and baseball fields at Founders and Valana, um, just informing people that, that, uh, we need travel teams and private instructors to register with our office, uh, for a couple of reasons. One, we, we need to verify their rosters to make sure that we're, we're serving Fairhope citizens and kids. Uh, but two, we need proof of, uh, insurance, because right now, it, it's been a free-for-all on our fields. We don't know who's using them, when they're using them. Um, a- and the, the second or third reason is that our fields are, are being overrun, and, you know, natural grass fields can only take so much abuse, and, and right now, we're having activity on our fields year-round. So, we just need to get a handle on who's using our fields and when, um, so that we can better manage it. So just in case you get phone calls about that, I wanted to let you know the signs are up now.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Fells Park, thank you for walking that on tonight.
Yes, sir.
That's gonna be an ornamental, um, steel fence that will greatly improve the aesthetics of the park. And the, the current wooden picket fence that is there now is a maintenance headache. We're constantly having to go back and replace boards periodically, so, uh, I, I'm thrilled about getting this project done, and I appreciate you walking that on tonight.
Yes, sir.
On the signs, I haven't seen them. Are they directed to you? Are they directed to you?
Yes, sir. It has our office number on there, and Becky's email address as well. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright. Sir, you doing alright?
Alright, uh, Electric Department, um, work continued on the Moore Substation. Um, we will be kicking off the forty-six to twelve work, which will tie these substations into our electric system. That will start next Monday. We will start on Nichols Avenue and work in that area until we get all the poles set, and then we will move around to the other areas, which we will, um, make sure that is posted on the city's website and on the Facebook page as we move forward. Um, I want to thank y'all for allowing us to walk the VT Skater work on. We need to get that done, because we have some of the issues that we have found trying to implement this first stage. Hope this will get that worked out. The other thing that we've got on the agenda is where the mayor's negotiating the amendment with, um, our engineering firm, Stewart, for the changes in the distribution work. We've had to, um, move some of the locations around and go back to single circuit instead of double circuit, because of the trees and the aesthetics that it would affect if we stayed double-circuit, so they have ironed that out, and it all looks good.
And, and that's a big number, but the increase is really all we're changing is twenty thousand, right?
That is correct.
That's the only adjustment, so don't worry, I mean, don't get taken back by that eight-hundred thousand number.
No, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get taken back by that. There may be a change order that comes in from the contractor after this, but that is gonna be due to a labor, a labor increase due to some work practices that's gonna have to change.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jay? No, alright, thank you. Sir, I know you had the-
I've got a couple of things on the agenda, and, uh, we do have some, it's kind of the same situation Richard's in. We opened bids, our bid on the Valley List Station. We only got one bid, so we'll be bringing that to you next council meeting for approval, but it's a good bid. I was very pleased with the price, but we only had one bidder. So, again, we're in the same boat, and I think everybody is. Um, a couple of things that I've got tonight, or we got tonight on the agenda is, uh, number eight. That's that, you know, you remember, we were gonna build a office building at the end of our building? Uh, we put it out for bids in the first time, and got two astronomical prices on a thirty by thirty, so we rejected and re-bid and got no bids the second time. So, uh, and by talking to Richard and the mayor, they, uh, presented us with a, I think, a great idea on the pecan building, so we cleaned up the pecan building on the east side, and housed our department up there. So, um, we would like to take the sixty thousand that we had in the budget to build the metal building, to build office space up at the pecan building, do some, uh, straighten it up, clean it up, and fixing some doors and stuff like that.
I'm glad y'all are making use of that. Uh, if anyone made it to the Symbol Clinic Open House recently, I mean, that space turned out great, so glad to see it being utilized.
It'll look really good when, when everybody's down. Uh, and then, that's number twelve. Just okaying, uh, the not-to-exceed for the preliminary engineering with Garber. I do want to make one clarification with Garber. Uh, they have a huge body of work. They do a lot in the treatment side, but I have never used Garber. I do know the engineers. I know one, you know, very well from the past, but I think that kind of got out the last time, but I, I have never used them. This is not personal. We picked the, the best engineer for the job, and I really believe that Garber is that.
Yeah. No, no concerns here?
And the budget for that was twenty-five, and I think they did the not-to-exceed twenty-four, eight fifty-nine.
Alright. Thank you, sir. Alright, who's next? Terry, how are you doing today?
Good, how are y'all?
We're good.
I own the gas department, uh, no real updates, uh, this week, but, um, I do want to go over kind of a little, a couple of things, what Eric said, um, that I'd like to add to it. So our locates for the city, just to get some numbers, in twenty-twenty, we had seventeen thousand locates. Twenty-twenty-one, we had twenty-seven thousand locates. Uh, and they're expecting twenty-twenty-two's to be ten percent higher than that. So that gives you an idea, and, and it's not uncommon for the locators to, to end up with fifty-plus locates a day, and that's speaking probably for all the utilities. It, it's hard to, it's, it's hard to keep up with that. You just, with, with the way they're calling them in, um, calling five thousand, six thousand foot at a time, you, just for one locate, it's, it's just hard to keep up. Um, so I do want to give him kudos for changing all the, what he's changing, um, especially on the ass builds and the hand digging. That's something that hadn't been done, and that's what damages most of our utilities, is them trying to get by real quick and doing it without doing that. So, and the ass builds are good, because we go back ten years later, and we'll find a line right on top of a gas line that's touching, and, and you don't know what for, until you dig that up, you know, ten years down the line. So I'm just, I give him kudos for doing that. I'm glad he's doing it. And I do not have anything on the agenda for tonight. Y'all have any questions for me?
Counsel, anybody? No?
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it. Jeff?
I've got, uh, one item on the agenda tonight, number eleven, just a yearly renewal for our radio system. Got any questions, let me know.
That's alright. For the Police Department?
For the Police Department, that's right, yeah.
Any questions, counsel?
Alright, thank you.
Alright, easy enough. Kim, do you have anything at all? Nothing? Bobby, anything? Nothing? Alright, let's see, what else are we missing? Hunter, what you got? I know you're gonna hurt.
Thank you. Um, while it's fresh, I'm gonna pile on the, the locate conversation real quick. The, um, I, I just want, I've got some friends at work at, at eight-one-one at the state level, and just to let you know, we, we've kind of been thinking about this, uh, for, uh, really getting highly alerted this over the last year, and this is also going on at the state level. So Alabama One called, some of those other locates are having the same issues on a bigger scale, um, being able to keep up with the, the actual numbers of requests coming in, and there is, uh, potential state law, uh, proposals being changed that will, in some ways, mimic what we're trying to accomplish on the local level. So this, this is not just a, a Fairhope thing, this is, uh, wide-reaching, and, and I think we will have support at the state level bef, for too long. Just want to mention and thank everyone that attended the comp plan meetings. Um, last couple of weeks were lots of, lots of evening meetings, and for those that attended, I greatly appreciate it. Right now, we don't have a date for the, the future meetings. Um, we all kind of needed to take a couple of breath, a couple of weeks, uh, uh, off and, and do our daily jobs, uh, that we have to do, so. But we will be posting those, uh, getting back, meeting with the team we've hired, and getting dates set up for the future meetings, uh, that should be a, a few months away. So, thanks for everyone that attended. That's all I have. If y'all have any questions. I don't have anything on the agenda tonight. I know everybody's really happy about those long-winded public hearing meetings.
I'm sure you appreciate a night off yourself, so.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Eric?
Yeah, I have one item on the agenda, and I'm first gonna beg forgiveness and then ask permission. Um, the truck, uh, it's, uh, truck for the building department. Uh, it is over budget, and I think in talking with purchasing, we're kind of getting what they have available. Vehicles are just tough to find, and as with everything else in life, the prices have gone up, so I would just ask that you please consider that, and if you decide to do that, it is much appreciated.
What's the over budget? That's not a real bad price, I mean.
It's not, and one of the things, you know, we kind of looked for different ones. This is a-
Forty grand?
Yeah, yeah. It's, this is a four-door, but in talking to, uh, Clint, he said that's actually mainly what Aldott's doing now. They're not doing many of the regular extended cabs, so that's what's available, and he actually, this vehicle is available sitting on a lot right now, so it's not an order item that's gonna take months to get in, so, uh, we would ask for your consideration. It would be appreciated.
Yes, sir. Alright, thank you. Um, who would be addressing the writer's cottage? Mayor, would that be you?
So, um, we were contacted by the folks for the writer's cottage, that leased the writer's cottage, to ask about the roof repair from some damage, I think during one of the storms, and as we started pulling that lease agreement to see he was responsible for that maintenance, we realized that they had been out of their lease for a number of years. So, um, got with Lisa and with Marcus and updated that, and just presenting it to you tonight.
Okay. See, that looks like that covers that page. Um, I can say the Library Board did vote, um, to support the appointment of Deborah Langham to the Library Board. Uh, Kevin, what about the Harbor Board? You've got an appointment and a reappoint, several reappointments.
Yes, we're gonna reappoint them all, uh.
So the Harbor Board's already-
On the list there.
Yep. Alright. I know we've got liquor license. Was the chief, anyone here, speak about that? I know we've got liquor license. Was the chief, anyone here speak about that? But I think everything is good, right?
She was here.
All right. Um, and then the only other thing is we will have an executive session tonight and we do, uh, anticipate taking action when we get back from that. So that's it for work session, unless anyone else has anything they want to address. Take a fifteen-minute break.